I call this meeting to order at 4:06 PM. Go call those orders.
Director Proctor, here. Director Mender, here. Director Odessa, yes. Director Perler?
Here.
Director Little?
Here.
I'm sorry, I put that outside. I got everyone's glasses on. Director Walker?
Present.
Director Gosey, here. No problem.
Perfect. Would everybody stand for the pledge allegiance? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, consider of approval of the agenda, in the case of an emergency, items may be added to the agenda by a majority vote of Board of Directors. An emergency is defined as a work stoppage, a crippling disaster, or other activity that severely imperils public health, safety, or both. Items on the agenda may be taken out of sequential order as a priority is determined by the Board of Directors. The Board may take action on any item appearing on the agenda. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Without?
No. I do, I have a recommendation for the Board on the agenda. You may want to take items A, B, and C first, which is the kind of business stuff to get out of the way, before the governance treaty. Or you can take it in the order that it's in, just because that governance training is going to go long. I don't know what folks' availability is, but the governance training is typically about an hour long. So if folks feel like they have to leave for whatever reason, then you might want to take the business first. But is that your discretion?
Yeah, I would like to do that. I'd like everybody's mind ready to go. We're not tired.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion for a new suggestion.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? I have item five, public comments. At the time, this time of the board, are there any comments on the agenda item or any not on the agenda? If any person wishes to be heard, he or she shall stand, address the president, identify self and state subject for comment. Time limit for each speaker is three minutes. A total of 15 minutes shall be allocated for each item. The Board may find it necessary to limit the total amount of all time for public comments on items not appearing on the agenda at any one meeting to one hour. A person deserving longer public comment time and/or action on specific items shall contact the Secretary and request that the item be placed on the agenda for the next meeting. Do we have any public comments? Did we receive any via email?
None.
Perfect. Now we'll move on to six, consent calendar. Any member of the Board, staff, or the public may request that items for the consent calendar be removed for a discussion. Items so removed shall be acted upon separately immediately following approval of items remaining on the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
There's no items on the consent calendar.
Oh, perfect. Well, that's even easier. Seven, board comments, reports on meeting and events attended by directors and authorization for director attendance at upcoming meetings and events. Do you have any my, or board numbers on you? No?
Like I do, I mean, just real briefly, I did pop into the City of Colville at their last meeting just to update them and give them our web address and advice that the meetings are being zoomed and broadcast and to go to our website with whatever they might want to be looking for. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Want to repeat that? I'm sorry.
There wasn't much to it.
Alright, so, perfect. And then, so move on to item eight. What then we're going to do? Item B first, discussion and possible action approved, special regulatory counsel and waivers. First one's with Hooper Lundie.
Yes, so when we were retained as counsel for IDHD, I brought in my murders and acquisitions team to be deal counsel on the transactional work that would be needed for us to paper the deal with both Pioneers and Heffernan and the absorption of the hospital and health district, and then the potential purchase of ECRMC with the City of El Centro and ECRMC. So we've got deal counsel in place, but we need the expertise of special regulatory counsel, which is a very specialized area that I don't have that legal background and neither do the folks. The folks on my M&amp;A team have done hospital acquisitions before with my former partner, Jody Root, who was, actually worked for ECRMC, worked for Heffernan. He, back before he retired, he did a lot of hospital deals and he was special regulatory counsel for us. But he retired a few years ago. So we've worked with a firm in LA called Hooper Lundie. I also solicited a proposal from Shepherd Mullen and Shepherd Mullen did not give me a proposal. So we've worked with Charles Oppenheim and his team before. And the way this works is we would retain them through Procopio, so their bills would be passed through with no markup as part of our bills. But they're very expensive and unfortunately, the world of special regulatory counsel is just very expensive. So their rates are higher than our rates, especially the discounted rates that we've offered. So I didn't want it to be like sticker shock when our bills started coming in and we had the Hooper Lundie bills as part of it. But I do think this is very critical to have regulatory counsel online because they are the experts on the licensing and the kind of healthcare regulations that we're going to have to make sure IDHD complies with when they absorb the hospital and urgent care. So their scope is limited. They're not necessarily going to continue advising IDHD into the future. It's really for the deal. It's for the transactional work. But they're asking for a $15,000 retainer. And so I just wanted to present their legal engagement agreement to the Board for approval before we brought them on, just to make sure that the Board's on the same page as us. And I also had a call this morning between the City of El Centro, City Attorney and City of El Centro, and VMG, who is the appraiser, who we are considering bringing onboard to appraise ECRMC and the El Centro properties. Because we'll need to know what the value of that is, even though El Centro has agreed in principle to transfer all of the assets to IDHD with no profit markup. But we need to know what the value of that transfer would be. And I learned on the call this morning that, for example, the valuation will require two valuations, a business enterprise valuation and the kind of brick and mortar land and building evaluation. There's like four, there's many properties that IDHD is going to be absorbing. I wasn't aware of, so I don't know if you were aware of it. But besides ECRMC itself and the medical office building, there are seven to nine other ancillary properties that would be absorbed. So VMG, and then we also have a proposal from CBRE, would be doing that appraisal. And the folks at VMG that are doing that appraisal are familiar with Charles and Oppenheimer because they do a lot of hospital valuation work. So I think efficiencies can be achieved with those folks all on the same team. The VMG appraisal will be handled by the City of El Centro, paid for by the City of El Centro, so we don't have to worry about that with respect to financing. We would be on the engagement agreement so that we're inside of the umbrella of privilege as part of the folks who retain VMG to come online to do the appraisal. But I just wanted to give that sort of background and update with respect to what's going on with El Centro and those negotiations. But I am happy to answer any questions and looking for a motion to approve Hooper Lundie as special regulatory counsel. I'm going to go ahead and cover the conflict waiver part two because there's no use bringing them on if you're not also going to sign the conflict waiver. So the second document is a conflict waiver for IDHD because Hooper Lundie advises the federal government on Medicare stuff. And from time to time, that could be a conflict with a hospital's reimbursement. But that is totally unrelated to the scope of work Hooper Lundie would be doing for us here. But because of the very broad protections that clients are given with respect to lawyers, we, Hooper Lundie has to disclose that potential conflict that says, "It's unrelated to the work we're doing. It's unrelated to the work we would do for you, but just so you know, we do this Medicare work." And so, you know, they want it kind of out there. They already have conflict waivers with Pioneers and ECRMC for the exact same stuff. So I think this aligns perfectly. It's nothing to be kind of concerned about. But they do need a written waiver in order to take on the representation for special regulatory counsel. So if you, if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. But the requested motion would be to approve special regulatory counsel and Hooper Lundie conflict waiver.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Because I'm still waiting for whatever financial information I can have to know, what kind of money we have to spend. But with the $15,000 retainer and then looking at the hourly rates ranging from a thousand, well, $1,300 all the way down to, I guess, the little guys at $380 with 815 to 1255 for our governor relations, do we have any idea how many hours we're looking at? I mean, $15,000 when you're talking about $1,300 per hour for one person isn't going to go very far.
Right. Well, and so Charles has indicated that he's going to staff it with his, like, team, which is Carl Schmitz and Robert Miller because they're the associates that are more cost-effective. But I forgot to mention, in my call with the El Centro City Attorney, they mentioned that they may be willing to pay towards the $15,000 retainer for special regulatory counsel, understanding that that special regulatory counsel will be pretty essential to all parties in terms of sorting out the licenses and the regulatory issues. So she didn't promise it by any means, but she said she was going to ask and she thought there was a good chance that the City of El Centro would be willing to contribute towards that 15, to pay the $15,000 retainer. They're going to take it up at their board meeting, I believe tomorrow. And ECRMC has a board meeting April, I believe April 8th or April 11th, one of those two dates, to take up this issue also. But I don't have a proposal because lawyers work on an hourly rate and so they could give you an estimate. But I don't think that whatever estimate they give would be sincere without diving in and understanding what they're in for. Because if they told you, "It's going to be 50 hours", and then they come in and say, "This is way more straightforward than we thought it was going to be", and we only need 20, you know, I don't think there's a way for them to fairly evaluate the three. So the three, it's going to be a three-party transaction or three separate transactions because it's going to be absorption of Pioneers, absorption of Heffernan, and absorption of ECRMC. And I think it's going to depend on the party's willingness to cooperate and negotiate. And I think there's so many it depends in there, especially since we have a very urgent timeline. You know, I don't know that they could fairly provide an estimate anyway. I think we could ask them for one, but they would say, "Don't hold us to it. That's why we're paying on an hourly rate." But no, we don't have, I don't have a number, like how much we think it would end up costing at the end of the day.
Yeah, I also have a concern as well because, I mean, we approved the districting, which was $36,000 or something like that. But we don't have a number that, how much we have to spend. And I mean, we don't want to go in debt, bring this board into debt as well.
Right.
So I really have a concern about where our finances are and who's supporting this board and where we have a beginning number and how much we're spending and what's the bottom line.
Let me address that, right? A lot of us stipulate that we can do that. We're going to use Heffernan funds for this. So right now in Heffernan's coffers is about $2.7 million, right? And lately, but that's in Chase Bank, right?
But can we have like that in a finance report? So we have it in front of us?
Yeah, actually, we have the full, we're going to change the latest audit and the latest financials for the next meeting. You're going to have those already. And I wonder if we can make sure that when we talk about the agenda, that we include those on there because they've always been ready. And I just want to send it on email and, you know, we're going to send it to you in the packet and then at the meeting, we could discuss every single iteration. Obviously, we could always get reports. You're going to get, every time we meet, you're going to get enough data around the expenses, right? That's just part of you being conscious of what's going on. But like you guys said, you know, these are teams that are very specialized.
Oh, I understand that.
And they work, yeah. So like you said, it's not that you're putting this district in debt. It's just that it's the cost of absorbing everything. And we have a conscientious about that, that it is going to cost some money. But at the end of the day, you're going to absorb everything anyways. The council, it doesn't matter if you take it from here right now, eventually it's all coming back to the same place. And what we talked about last Saturday for a month ago, before you know it, November, December, and then we're going to be saying, "Oh my God, it's already, January, once around the corner." So it's just a reality that. So for now, at least, you know that I'll see the report out. I can say that tonight, I think, you know what? It'll be probably, tomorrow morning, you'll have it on. At least you see the latest financial from Heffernan. And at some point, there's a conversation that you think we're going to run out for whatever reasons. We definitely have to start talking to El Centro to broil about that as well.
Yeah, because I think that we really need to know a beginning balance to an ending balance and how much we're spending.
Sure.
Because we're responsible. We're fit to share, responsible for this board, you know? And I don't want someone to say, "Oh, they're just spending money, you know, willy-nilly and not really keeping track of it." So that's my concern. So if you can put something on paper, I would feel much more comfortable. But I do understand that we need to move forward with this.
So I think to most, I think kind of what the Board's asking for is like a rolling total of like the IDHD expenses. So like the bill that came from Prokopio, how much we're going to pay the demographer any expense that we've incurred. I mean, we can just be conscientious of how much it costs.
Yeah, got it. And then two, speaking to the timeline, when was the last time El Centro Regional was completely evaluated? And so would they have historical data to look back on as part of this evaluation process to essentially speed things up? But just to give them a reference point to start, if we start that process now of doing the evaluation, will we be able to really meet the timelines that we need to?
We talked about that on our call. And VMG has given us an estimate of five weeks for their evaluation after they receive the data. So VMG has not submitted a written proposal of their estimate. They are going to give us an estimate of how much it's going to cost. Again, that cost is entirely borne from the City of El Centro. But they are going to get us a value of proposal in the next two days. And then there's still a conversation with CBRE to be had to see what we think of the respective qualifications and price points of folks to do the appraisal. I don't know the answer to the ECRMC question, when's the last time they had it appraised? But I do think we need to have the current snapshot of where the hospital is with respect to the going business enterprise value and then the brick and mortar analysis. Because what IDHD would absorb would be the land, the building, the improvements, the license, which the license is going to expire at ECRMC. I think it's like June 30th of this year. So we need to figure out what is going to happen there and how to transfer it, transfer it or get it over to IDHD. And then the asset, so the personal property in ECRMC, like the MRIs, the machines, the printers, or whatever, is actually owned by ECRMC. But the land and the real estate is owned by El Centro. So we kind of need two separate pictures of what that is or what each, what everything is a pretty stat. And then there's a goodwill evaluation, which who knows if there will be any goodwill? But if there is, there's that evaluation as well. So I think we need the current numbers because the satisfaction of the potential bond covenants that we would be absorbing would rely on that valuation, I think, too. So.
So to the, to the brick and mortar portion of it, do you believe that we are actually going to get an accurate number at this point because of the steps that they're taking at this time to do the seismic upgrades?
Yeah.
So right now, it's currently under construction, so we have no real assessed value. Or can we have a real assessed value based on the state that it's in currently? And then secondly, is there a legal obligation for them to submit that information to the City of El Centro as far as what they currently hold in their possession for those liquid assets? Do they have an obligation to provide those within a timely manner? Or is that something that we may have to go back and forth with them on?
So, um... One of the items on the agenda tonight is an NDA, a non-disclosure agreement with City of El Centro and ECRMC. So if we approve that, if this board approves that tonight, El Centro has it on their agenda for tomorrow. ECRMC has it on their agenda for the April 8th board meeting. If I'm getting that date wrong, I'm sorry. And I do believe, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know, but I do believe, based on my discussions with El Centro's counsel and on the call this morning, that there are sincere efforts to be transparent and turn everything over. I already got a list of assets and addresses. They're going to turn over, they're going to do probably a preliminary title report, but, you know, addresses and square footage and everything of all of the properties. There's like physician housing, there's an outpatient center, you know? But all that stuff needs to get organized by someone and that's what VMG is going to do, is they're going to organize everything, evaluate the brick and mortar stuff, evaluate the business, evaluate the assets, and then tell us how much it's worth. And then that's something that would be eventually shifted over to IDHD.
I have a quick question. So in regards to negotiating with El Centro Regional, we're actually negotiating with two entities, right? The City of El Centro and El Centro Regional.
Correct. So they are related through a statutory scheme. And City of El Centro owns the land and the building. And then ECRMC, which is a separate public agency, owns the personal property in there. So like the machines and the other stuff that's in there. And I believe the employees are ECRMC employees.
So like, for El Centro Regional, we're just basically acquiring the business aspect?
All of it. But you're right, yes. From ECRMC, we're acquiring the business and the stuff inside and their licenses and all the stuff that allows them to do business, as far as I know. And then from City of El Centro, what we're acquiring is the land and the buildings. Because it's, there's a, there's no lease actually right now between ECRMC and the City of El Centro. But the obligations are by law, by statute, with the statute which created ECRMC.
I have a question. So since we have two different entities, who's responsible for all of their, like, retirement liabilities for employees and stuff like that?
That's something that's going to have to get worked out through the negotiations and with the special regulatory counsel. Because I don't know, as I sit here, whether ECRMC employees are hers or what kind of retirement obligations they have. I mean, presumably, if the acquisition works in the same way that the Pioneers and Heffernan acquisitions will work, you will absorb all assets along with all liabilities. And so retirement obligations would fall in that bucket, I presume. Whether or not that's something that can be negotiated out or treated differently is something that will happen through the deal, through the negotiation process with the City of El Centro.
So getting back to the task at hand, I guess I kind of want to call for the question unless there's other things. Because I feel like we're going down a different path from focusing in.
Right, on the special regulatory.
I'm guessing that this company is a good one as far as this would be the best way for us to go and that their rates are in line with any other entities out there that would do the same type of business.
Yes, I hate that that's a fair statement. I think if I had more time, I would solicit more proposals and bring three before the Board if I had, if I had the chance to do that. Like I did, I did solicit a proposal from Shepherd Mullen, which has a pretty robust healthcare practice, and I got no response. I don't know if it's because they're conflicted out or if it's because, you know, I don't know why. The other attorneys that I was considering using actually represent, I think either UCSD or ECRMC in the transaction, so we wouldn't be able to use them anyway. So yeah, ideally, if I had more time, I would solicit more proposals. And, but we have worked with this firm in the past, so we know them to be good and efficient. And we also have worked with, they have also worked with VMG. And I have worked with VMG in appraising other hospitals and have found them to be incredibly competent, like leaders in the, in the field with respect to hospital appraisals. So it's good news that if we, if the City of El Centro retained VMG, they're very familiar with Charles and his team. So I think they would work efficiently together. But, I mean, I can't sit here and tell you that there aren't cheaper or other attorneys who could do the same work. I do think that their rates are very high, which is one of the reasons I was like, "I'm going to bring it to the Board. I don't want to just retain them through Prokopio and then I'm passing through a $20,000 bill." But I also have looked and I do think this area is incredibly specialized, which allows them to charge insane rates. You know, it's like 20,000, which is my rate, I don't, you know? But that's the, that's the universe that we're in right now. And I do think that, given the timeline and given the fact that this is a statutorily required acquisition, like, we have no choice. We're going to acquire at least Pioneers and Heffernan. So we need this counsel. And I wish I knew how to do it, but I don't. It's not my area of specialty, so we do need to rely on special counsel.
And this expertise addresses one of the main concerns that we've heard people take the podium to.
Yeah, the regulations. I mean, because I don't know, I know that there's like laws that have come online and there's the Department of Public Health that we're going to have to work with. But I don't know, for example, if we're going to need to lobby Sacramento to get some exception for some, you know, time period that we need, like a cooling off period or acquisition period. I just don't know that information. I wouldn't even know where to look because those regulations are pretty thick. Some of them are federal, some of them are controlled by state. And that's why we really need these folks to come in to come in and sort it out.
Yeah, because you're dealing with two different entities, the federal government and the state government.
Yeah, and this is all on.
And they have to do their things on their own.
And that's the hospital regulation side. Because I'm very confident in my folks that do the deal stuff, that's papering the transaction, negotiating, making sure you're getting fair rates, et cetera. So the paperwork will be worked out, but the regulation side is very specialized and we don't have that specialty announced.
It's just my fear is that, you know, when they, when they do, you know, when this company comes in, whatever company comes in, and they provide that evaluation, and they provide that evaluation, then you have two separate entities who are going to attempt to refute that information. And then we have this back and forth period that I'm afraid of, you know, in terms of the timeline.
I do think, you know, when we talked this morning with El Centro and VMG, the, I think the five-week turnaround was promising. Because as long as the city can provide information and data to VMG in a timely manner, which, I mean, during our Zoom, there was information already starting to be sent over to them. I, I think that that will work, uh, because we don't have to have the ink done by November 5. We just have to have the terms worked out by November 5. And terms is pretty broad, like, that's a pretty big umbrella. So, you know, the January 1 deadline that exists for Pioneers and Heffronin doesn't exist for ECRMC. Just the terms are required to be worked out generally by November 5. So I think, I, I still think we can meet our deadlines, um, but I don't know what I don't know. And so this is something I'm hoping regulatory council will come online and tell me, this is a piece of cake, or this is impossible, or this is great, or we can do it if, you know, that's what the information, I'll rely on them for.
I think, you know, we've had people worry, you know, concerns about the grandfathering in of certain rural healthcare clinics from both El Centro and PMH. And so is this regulatory council something that's gonna help advise on those as well?
Yes, and to say, for example, take ECRMC, but don't take the outpatient center. Or don't, you know, we're gonna have to close this, or we're gonna, I, I can't imagine there's a universe where we can't absorb everything and then decide what to shut down, what to improve, what to do with it. Because it really is the acquisition of assets that you're doing. And the, the risk is the mitigation of potential debts, right? If you're taking on a sinking ship, you don't wanna take on a sinking ship. But, um, that's what the VMG appraisal will tell us.
And we also don't have our total Kaufman Hall reporting to see if there's a gap at all, cause all of them have a gap.
Hasn't been updated yet, and that's something that we.
Do you have any update on PMH's board approving to still on to the Kaufman Hall study? I know NDA was sent to them, but they haven't signed it yet. Do you know when that's gonna be signed?
No, I don't.
I'll talk about that too when we get to the NDA item.
Okay, well, I guess at this point, I would be inclined to go ahead and make the motion that we, accept the legal engagement of Cooper Lundey Bookman and accept the NDA, right? Is that what it is?
It's, no, it's, um, the conflict waiver.
The conflict waiver, yeah, thank you.
A second.
I have a motion by Goodsell and a second by Minar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next conflict waiver is for Procopio. This is one that's super basic and shouldn't be a problem either. We, um, when we brought on, when we proposed ourselves as legal counsel, we ran conflicts on City of El Centro, ECRMC, Pioneers, and Heffronin. And, um, we did not run a conflict on UCSD, because UCSD isn't actually any of the parties, you know, they don't own or, they're an affiliate of ECRMC. But, uh, once I started talking to the folks at ECRMC, they said UCSD's gonna be pretty involved in this. And we do, Procopio represents UCSD medical staff in San Diego on totally unrelated items, but we do have that relationship with UCSD. So I asked UCSD for a conflict waiver and said, we're counsel for IDHD. To the extent we're gonna be negotiating anything and UCSD is on the other side, we may be in a position where we're reviewing contracts in a position adverse to UCSD. So will you waive that so that we can represent IDHD zealously in this transaction? And UCSD, we've asked them for this on a number of occasions, because UCSD's huge and the UC regions are huge and we've had to do this a lot. They said, no problem. They've signed a conflict waiver. So this conflict waiver, which is before you now, says exactly that. It says that, in the event of a conflict, if we end up being on the other side of UCSD when we're reviewing these contracts or anything, we're gonna represent IDHD. We're not gonna be representing UCSD. We are gonna continue representing UCSD in unrelated capacities for the stuff that we're doing to some of their doctors in San Diego. But that has nothing to do with what we're doing here. And our obligation and our loyalty is gonna be to IDHD. So usually the tough sell is on the UCSD side, cause they're saying, no, we don't want you to be on the other side, we want you representing us. But they've already agreed to that conflict waiver, so this is really more of a disclosure, so that this board understands that we do represent UCSD in other capacities. And it's actually not me, it's other partners within my law firm that do that.
So the law actually states that we are going to negotiate with El Centro Regional Medical Center? It doesn't say anything about UCSD.
Correct.
So why is UCSD involved at all?
Well, um, I don't know right now, but they've said that the CEO of ECRMC is a UCSD employee. But all the employees below there are ECRMC employees. So in some capacity, UCSD is involved. I still don't really think there's even a conflict. We're being very, very just careful. And we wanna be super transparent with our clients, cause we don't want any clients, UCSD or IDHD, to feel like we've hidden something. So I don't even think, and I've talked to UCSD's counsel about this, that this is even probably legally necessary, given that they're actually not on the other side of this, they're just the affiliate, that, a contract that would be absorbed when ECRMC is absorbed. But in, out of an abundance of caution, we just wanted to be totally transparent with this board. So we're requesting that the board offer advice, this conflict waiver. And again, we're, um, representing IDHD. We're not asking for a conflict waiver to represent UCSD. They've already waived that.
Doesn't El Centro, maybe, I don't know, don't quote me on this, cause I could be wrong, but, doesn't UCSD, don't they contract with them for like the emergency?
Yes.
Emergency doctors, and they also do critical adult telehealth.
Yes. So the idea is, to the extent we get into the nitty-gritty with respect to the negotiations, I don't think those negotiations are gonna do a close look at the contracts quite yet. But what, if they do, or if upon the second pass after we've acquired ECRMC, we're doing an evaluation of the contracts and we say, I don't know about this UCSD contract, you may be better off X or Y. Or if we say, this looks like a great deal and UCSD should be expanded to all the campuses. Whatever it is, we're gonna be representing IDHD in that capacity. And so we need UCSD to understand that and sign off. And they're telling us, in that transactional capacity, we are signing off and you can do that. Probably because, like I said, I, the work we have done for UCSD is, it's not here at the Imperial Valley.
Yeah, and I think also too, we need to know the relationship between UCSD and the bondholder. We definitely need that disclosed, because I think that's a big key to why UCSD is involved.
Yeah, I think ECR, ECRMC's counsel on that is, um, I think they use ORIC. And so we'll start discussing that with bond counsel to understand the covenants. Our bond counsel, our in-house bond attorney, has already looked at, there's a system online called Emma, the like electronic management system that has all the bond documents. And he's looked at that and he's done a synopsis for me on, like, can we even do this? Can we even absorb that bond debt if we needed to, high level? His conclusion was, yes, we can, but we have to A, B, C, D, E, F, G. So, we need to just start the processing.
They have the same process K and V as well, if the bond as well.
So the motion that we would request is a motion to approve the conflict waiver with Proco, for Procopio and UCSD.
I would go ahead and read that we accepted.
A second. I have a motion by Goodsell and a second by Burger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you. So the next item is the discussion and possible action to approve confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement. I specifically didn't put in this agenda who the NDA would be with, because we were hoping to have multiple parties on the NDA. The initial draft of the NDA that I circulated a few weeks ago was for Heffronin, Pioneers, ECRMC, El Centro, and IDHD, so that we could all be on the same NDA. Pioneers hasn't gotten back to me, Heffronin did and said they're in. And then the City of El Centro, we went back and forth on some proposed revisions. And the City of El Centro asked to be on a separate confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement, which I think works and makes sense, because their transaction is separate from the other transactions that are happening with respect to the.
But they said on the board.
Sorry?
But they said on the board of El Centro Hospital.
Who?
The City of El Centro has members on the El Centro Regional Medical Board.
It would be El Centro, ECRMC, and IDHD. Those are the three parties on the confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement. And again, I, I didn't hear, I pinged, um, the attorney for PMHD today to say, I sent this to you a few weeks ago, I haven't heard anything back. Are we gonna get this signed or not? I actually don't know if the non-disclosure is even actually necessary with PMH, considering we're the successor agency. But, you know, in an attempt to be cooperative and, you know, get things going, I sent it to them. But, so what's before you today is just a confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement that would be binding between IDHD, the City of El Centro, and ECRMC. This is gonna be on City of El Centro and ECRMC's upcoming agendas for approval. And this would allow us to share confidential or proprietary information, including sensitive financial information and the information that we're ultimately gonna give to VMG or, or CBRE, whoever the appraiser is gonna be, that allows us to be inside of this trust tree. I should point you to, um, the obligations of the representatives, which is the board. So to the extent we have any discussions in closed sessions or otherwise relating to confidential information, it does have pretty strict confidentiality provisions that require this board to not release that information to anyone outside of this board. And if you have questions about the NDA, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's pretty standard and it's pretty rigorous. I think on, in this, in the broad scheme of NDAs and confidentiality agreements, this is one of the stricter ones I've been involved with. So.
I have a question. So since we are gonna be entering with, potentially with the City of El Centro and ECRMC, is the fact that Anola is on the PMH board and they haven't responded to you, is that gonna be a problem?
So, no, it shouldn't be. I mean, I think, um.
Because she's signing this agreement.
So she's not gonna sign this agreement in her individual capacity. The board will make a motion and then probably authorize the chair to sign this agreement on behalf of the board. But it, what is important is that the board understand its fiduciary and legal obligations as board members of IDHD to not disclose information outside of this board. So, uh, one of the mechanisms that we have for controlling that is we're not actually gonna send out the data to any of the board members. We're not gonna email it to you so that you can forward it to anyone else, because accidents happen, sincere accidents happen all the time. Hacking happens. So we're gonna control that universe by keeping it just in-house in the lawyers. And then if the board or the negotiation team has questions about it, we'll probably do in-person meetings or paper copies, so that documents are not transmitted electronically and potentially disclosed. And then, you know, it will be up to each individual board member to determine whether or not they fairly can be involved in conversations like this involving confidential information and not disclosing it outside, to outside folks, or whether they wanna abstain or recuse themselves. Because that's totally within your purview as board members too, is I don't know if I can be unbiased, it's really hard to wear two hats. And I, you know, I'd prefer not to, and so, uh, any of the directors can recuse themselves from receiving the information, which might not be a bad idea, given the very strict language in here and the fact that a breach of contract action, uh, would be pretty, um, the potential damages could be, could cost the district a lot of money.
Oh, yes.
So, um, so I don't see a legal conflict right now. But I acknowledge that it's a very uncomfortable situation that could result in recusals. And then, if any information, some of this I'll go over the governance training, but if any closed session information is disclosed outside of closed session, that's illegal. And there's potential legal ramifications against the individual person also resulting from that. So that's another reason to be extra careful and, you know, thoughtful about the information you're choosing to receive. So the motion I would list for on this is a motion to approve the confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement between IDHD and City of El Centro and ECRMC. And then I also would ask, um, for authorization to enter into an NDA with Pioneers if they come back and say, sure, this works for us. Because I did send them the exact, the exact same version. I just changed it to PMHD, cause I wanna be very balanced with all parties. So, the old version that I sent out has gotten modified by the El Centro attorneys. So I used the modified version, changed it to Pioneers, and that agreement would be between just IDHD and Pioneers. And, um, so I don't have that before me today. But what the board could do is approve the confidentiality, confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement with respect to City of El Centro. And then also approve the confidentiality, confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement with respect to Pioneers, so long as it's substantially in the same form as the document that you have today. So that we have a little more flexibility moving forward and we don't have to bring back an NDA for Pioneers at the next board meeting.
Right. Now, you said the previous one was for?
It was for all the parties together, so Heffronin, Pioneers, ECRMC, El Centro, and IDHD.
Okay, so I have a question about UCSD. Since, uh, El Centro folks have said that UCSD's going to be involved in these negotiations and shouldn't we have an NDA with them as well?
So, the NDA is actually their request, because we're, we don't have any confidential information to this quote as IDHD. So our concern is very minimal. Because even in this agreement, for example, it says in section, uh, at the end of paragraph four, you can see that it says that at such time as IDHD acquires ECRMC, such information shall become the information of IDHD. So, you know, if they feel they can't participate without an NDA, they'll let us know. But we don't really have any concerns. Because we don't have confidential information that we're hoping no one finds out quite yet.
Why should I have to ask all these questions back and forth? I'm so sorry.
Should. No problem, that's what I'm here for.
So are these NDA, these NDAs essentially are to make the negotiate, like them, right? So we'll say PMH comfortable with sharing data with IDHD?
It should, yeah, it should.
Cause it's not like we're gonna get information and share it with El Centro or otherwise.
You know, the deal with the City of El Centro is, I think, in my mind significantly different than the deal with PMHD. Because PMHD, by operation of law, will cease to exist January 1st or as soon as LAFCO dissolves it. And we are the statutorily appointed successor agency. So we are going to absorb all of their financial statements today or January 1st. And refusing to disclose that information only hurts the community. Because there's not gonna be a PMHD, you know, next year, presumably. And so that's one of the reasons I'm not quite sure an NDA is even necessary by and between. Because we're really one in the same entity and same with Heffronin, we're really one in the same. I mean, we're the successor agency, it's just terribly bad government to dissolve one today and then have the other one lined up tomorrow. You just can't do it like that. You need this overlap period. So, I, I actually don't know that an NDA is necessary, but I'm offering one to PMH to make sure that they feel comfortable that we're not going to put their sensitive financial information on blast before the entire community, for example. But once that information becomes ours, there's a number of strategic reasons why IDHD will also wanna keep that information confidential. Because you're allowed to by law. And if you have potential competitors, like private hospitals that are gonna come in, you wanna make sure they're not gonna steal your ideas or steal your stuff, or, you know, whatever. But, um, but yeah, it's, I mean, my hope is that we'll make all parties comfortable sharing truthful and accurate data.
And have you gotten any response?
No, not as of today at, you know, 1:30, the last time I checked my email. I, I emailed a counsel for PMH, Sally, I think her name is Sally, yeah. So, and I, I first sent the email to her in the middle of March, like right after our March board meeting. Furiously doing so.
So now that LAFCO denied their application, I mean, it should make things a little bit smoother.
I think so.
I mean, it's over, it's part, it's over.
The LAFCO process is over. The, um, application for PMHD was denied. So there is no kind of expectation, or there should be no expectation on the part of PMHD that they will either take over Heffronin or become a countywide healthcare district or continue to exist after January 1st. But I don't know what I, again, what I look in their minds. But yeah, hopefully, I mean, there was a very kind of conciliatory tone at the LAFCO meeting of, let's do it in the best interest of the community. So hopefully that will be pervasive throughout the negotiations and they'll be pretty straightforward about producing data. Cause arguably, if the LAFCO thing was still hanging out in the background, they would have more reason to protect their financial data and other data. Because there's still a chance that they would be doing something with the hospital. But that, that's, I don't think that that's there anymore after the LAFCO denial.
So we'll make the motion to approve the confidentiality and the NDA between, or as presented for the collective parties that are, um, that are noted within the document. And also the NDA with Pioneers or PMH as presented, if it does reflect this directly in, in the way that it's presented. A second.
And let's just throw Heffronin in there too, even though Heffronin has already agreed to produce data, but let's, uh.
Put them in.
Put them in.
Also make inclusive of Heffronin.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I forget about you.
Just so that the minutes are reflected.
A second then.
They've already signed it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you. That is the business we have for today. And now I'll turn to the governance training. And I just, I know this stuff well, um, but if you need me to slow down and if you have questions, by all means, please ask and stop me and interject questions. But today, we are going to cover, we're gonna go to the next slide. Brown Act and public meetings, public records act, so what, your personal email, your text messages, what are public records and what aren't, so that you're aware. And then how to avoid conflicts of interests, um, legal conflicts of interest under the Political Reform Act, Government Code 1090, provisions about financial gain and bribery, which are the most consequential. So, public meetings under the Brown Act, next slide, please. And of course, all of you have this at, should have this, if you wanna write any handy notes. So, next slide. Holding, okay, so the Brown Act, for those of you that are not aware, is our public, uh, open meeting law for transparency of the public agencies. And it requires that the actions of a local public agency's governing board be taken out of open and public meeting. You have to have an agenda, the. You have to have an agenda, the public has to be allowed to speak, and you can only take action at meetings. You cannot take action over email or over text or decide something on the side and then come to the meeting and talk about it. You have to make their, your decisions in an open and public notice meeting. Um, next slide, please. The Brown Act applies to governing bodies, committees. So if you decide to have a finance committee, if you decide to have a quality committee, the Brown Act will apply to any committee that this board creates, whether it's advisory or a decision-making committee, as long as it's created by formal action of the board. So if this board decides to create a committee, it'll be considered a legislative body under the Brown Act. The exception, which you'll see on the next slide, but I'm not going to go there yet, is the ad hoc, which we created at the last board meeting. So I'll, I'll go over that and the rules for ad hocs. But, um, private corporations, when created to exercise public authority and specifically less C's of hospitals that are leased out by a hospital district are also subject to the Brown Act. So this is when a private corporation comes in to run a hospital for a public healthcare district, they also have to comply with the Brown Act. They don't get out of that obligation. Um, and that's unique to hospital districts. So that's something to know about. And there are some special closed session exceptions that apply for hospitals and healthcare districts in light of that fact. Because you want to make sure and have the ability to run a healthcare district and run a hospital without making all of it public and undermining your bottom line. Um, so next slide. So the Brown Act, again, applies to committees, so standing committees. And you should carefully consider how your committees are created in order to avoid creating a Brown Act committee if you don't want one. So one of the ways, some of the fundamental questions when you're considering whether or not the committee is going to be subject to the Brown Act is, does the board of directors appoint the voting members? Does the board of directors give that committee funding or support? And then did the board of directors create the committee by official action? So next slide. But, the exception to all the rules, it does not apply to ad hoc committees. What makes an ad hoc committee different than all the other committees we've been talking about? Ad hoc committees are composed of board members only. It has to be less than a quorum, so less than majority. So in this case, an ad hoc committee for this board can be two members, three members, and that's it. Two or three members. Once you get into four, then you get into forum and it's no longer an ad hoc. You can have a finance committee that's four or five members, more than a quorum, but that's a Brown Act committee. Um, so the other critical components of an ad hoc committee is it has to have a limited life and a limited scope. So something like a finance committee is like, you're going to have that for the rest of time because you're always going to need to review financial stuff. But something like a negotiation committee, which we created at the last board meeting, is finite. That negotiation committee will end when the negotiations end. So considerations about building a campus, considerations about, um, a potential new service. You can form ad hocs for any of those. Um, are you going to build like a playground in the children's wing? Okay, we're going to have a playground committee. Once that issue is decided, it's done, right? And so that is a perfect ground for like an ad hoc committee. Um, and then the ad hoc committee can't have regular meetings. So you can't say second Thursday of every month is going to be our ad hoc meeting. It has to be a meeting to meeting, like sporadic, because it can't be a standing committee. Um, and it's advisory only. So ad hoc committees cannot be delegated any authority to make decisions. They only are assisting in advice and guiding whatever the topic is. And then the ad hocs come back to the board meeting and then give recommendations to the board. So it's a really great way of having board member, elected official input on an item without having to go through the public scrutiny of the Brown Act, which is really helpful in a lot of times. And it's also like, you can meet over Zoom. You can meet anytime you want, you know? You can text each other and, um, not necessarily open it up to public scrutiny. Um, and then there's also other types of committees, like once you have a CEO, the CEO can create an executive committee and decide, I want two board members on it, or I want three board members on it. And that committee would not be subject to the Brown Act either. That would be a committee that's created by the CEO. It's not created by the board. And so it wouldn't be subject to Brown Act scrutiny. Um, okay, so what is a meeting? So this is the, the, the thing that gets people in trouble. They don't realize what a meeting is. A meeting is anytime four or more of you are discussing any item related to district business. So you don't all have to be physically in the same room for there to be a meeting. If all of you happen to be at the park because your kids are playing soccer or whatever, and you all get together at the goal line and start talking about district business, that's a meeting. And that would be an illegal meeting under the Brown Act because it's not publicly noticed and there's no agenda for the public to like have a heads up and attend and hear the public's business. So you have to be really careful. The biggest issue is also, so if you're at a social gathering, let's say a fundraiser at the mayor's house or whatever it is, you can all go, you can all be there, but be, be very aware of the fact that if four of you are anywhere talking, if you're talking about the district's business and someone else overhears you or someone else just observe you, there could be allegations that you had an illegal meeting under the Brown Act. Even if all you were talking about was, you know, the debate, the presidential debate or whatever, you know, it could have nothing to do with the district's business. Perception is reality for a lot of people. So even if you were doing nothing wrong, they will accuse you of doing something wrong if there's four or more of you talking at a social gathering. So be aware of who your fellow board members are, where you are. If you see three of them, don't go over there. And on a similar note, don't be offended if you see one of your fellow board members and they don't come over. They could be trying to avoid Brown Act applications, so. Um, and then emails and text messages. So a serial meeting is, I tell, um, Director A information and I say, or this actually happens most typically with the CEO. The CEO will say, we have this item coming up on the agenda. Director A, what do you think Director A says? I think it sounds great. Uh, you have my support. Nothing wrong with that. Then the CEO goes to Director B and says, what do you think? Do I have your support? Yes, I think it's great, you have my support. The CEO goes to all seven of you and asks you, do I have your support on this item? And you all say, yes. That is not a serial meeting. That is fine. The second it becomes a serial meeting is when the CEO says, Director A, B, and C already told me they were in. They told me they're good with it. They're going to vote yes. What do you say, Director D? Now Director D is in a position where, I can't tell you what I'm going to say because you already told me what those three are going to vote. And now I know what they're going to do. And that is a meeting, that's a serial meeting under the Brown Act that the CEO is facilitating. So very important to have staff that know what they're doing. And also very important that you are aware when you're hearing the information, that you're not hearing information that could ultimately put you in a difficult situation. Um, so be very aware of serial meetings. Also, text messages, if you're all on a group text, delete it. Never happened, delete it. If you're all on a group email, um, there is only one real instance where it's okay for all of you to be, uh, look to, on a group email or a group text message. And that's if you're deciding whether or not to hold a meeting. So, we want to hold a meeting on Friday, can you make it? Yes, 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 yes. No, I can't. Or, that is actually fine. That's one of the bases under the Brown Act to communicate with each other outside of a board meeting is if you're figuring out whether or not you can schedule a meeting. But the second that text message becomes, good, because I want to talk about the playground issue. Yeah, I hate that issue. Oh, actually, I love it. Now you're in meeting territory and that's bad news. But if you're just talking about scheduling, that's okay. Um, so be really careful with group texts and group emails. You can text one director and that's fine. You can text two directors and that's fine. But the second it becomes more than four or more, it's a really dangerous territory and you're in potential Brown Act violation land.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Let's say if something does come up and we're subpoenaed, what, what gets, does anything get taken from us, like our iPad, our phone, or computers?
Yes.
All of it or just one device? How does that work?
It depends on, um, who's doing the subpoena. If it's the FBI, they'll probably take everything. If it's the district attorney, who knows? The, the prosecuting entity for the Brown Act is the district attorney because it's state law. It's not federal law. The federal law is involved, it's FOIA and it's different stuff. But you'll see when we get to the public records portion, that the best thing for the district to do is adopt a policy on public records that advises board members to not use personal devices for district business, to not use personal emails for district business. Because when you do, it opens all of your texts and emails up to public scrutiny under the Public Records Act. But if you can confidently say, no, no, every time someone texts me about district business, I forward it to my IDHD email and then I delete it off my phone. And we only communicate through my IDHD email. Then, under the Public Records Act and under the Brown Act, the only information subject to scrutiny is barely your IDHD emails. Those will be open to the public. They'll read every, they can read everything. And there's a couple, like publications who, once a year, twice a year, they send out very broad requests for, I want all your director's emails from the past year. Just to read them, just to see what's in there, just to, I want anything that has an OMG in an email. Anything that has three exclamation points or more, I want to see those emails. And sometimes you have to turn those over. Um, so the best way to avoid that is by being very clear about, this is my public email or my public phone, if you're going to be texting over the phone. Um, and then this is my private Gmail or Yahoo or Hotmail, whatever, and my private phone. And so it, it's not a bad idea to get two phones. Um, it's a big pain in the butt, but sometimes it's a, it depends on the kind of scrutiny you're under. Because if you have a very active public who want to see all your stuff, it's just less of a headache to have a public phone and a private phone. But, uh, many folks do business out of their Gmail, text on their private phone, and just keep their fingers crossed that they never get a PRA. And they never get a PRA. So, you know, it's a risk.
What about like, so I know like something you know, there are like attorney-client privilege?
Yeah.
Is that likewise?
Oh, yeah. Definitely privileged. There's a bunch of exceptions. You'll see when we get to the PRA section. But yeah, there's a ton of exceptions to the Public Records Act that protect personnel, sensitive information. For example, a bunch of the district's ultimate information is going to be protected by HIPAA, which is like healthcare privacy stuff, uh, employee privacy, um, attorney-client privilege, attorney work product. Um, there's all kinds of privileges that can apply, that apply to Public Records Act stuff too. So you should never be, this is kind of joke, but it's the truth. You should never be anxious about texting your lawyers or emailing your lawyers because all of that stuff is very broadly protected. Never is it disclosed. If it's disclosed, it's inadvertent. And if it's inadvertently disclosed, there's pretty broad discretion to claw back. But, um, the stuff where it gets dicey is the more salacious stuff, like, that was private. And there's, in the Public Records Act, there are balancing acts between privacy interests and the public's interest in disclosure. And you just have to like balance it and make a determination. And then you have to say, who made the determination? Like whose butt is on the line for saying, I'm not producing this? Because if it's challenged in court and a court looks at it and says, no, the public's interest in disclosure clearly outweighs the privacy interests here. Um, that person is responsible, there's attorney fees involved, very, very, very consequential. So stuff can get very sensitive when you're talking about public records.
Just to clarify, then, do, do they just need access to the email or do you have to actually give a device over?
No, you don't give your device over. They only get access to the emails. In no event does the Public Records Act require you to, to turn over hardware. Never.
Yeah, because many of us have other business.
Yeah, never, never, never.
I was going to say, I've actually like had, you know, I worked on SALT-C and when I was at the county and then, you know, you'd get a Public Records Act, you know? Every time you talk about SALT-C, it's like, you know, you kind of, you do your search or whatever and be like, our attorney's on this one, we don't have to send it. But yeah, they, you know, another one did on a project that was very scrutinized and imperial and was just like, hey, go through your emails, figure them out. You know, they talked about this, you just want them. It's really no.
Yeah, but they do sometimes identify certain texts that they want and certain names. Yeah, they'll ask you for. So anything that, that's in that email that contains that information, you have to give it over.
Okay.
They'll do keyword searches and then.
I want to be phoneless or?
No, no, no. In no event. The, the only time you would be phoneless is if there's an actual criminal investigation and then you've got bigger issues, you've got bigger fish to fry. Can your lawyer run away? Because that's the only event, if there was a subpoena. And most subpoenas, you know, you would get like a deposition notice before you get a subpoena. Um, and the subpoenas are directed to the district. They're not directed to individuals because you're only here in your official capacity as a director for the district. So you don't have to sweat that. Um, and there's, I'll, I'll go over timelines and stuff because it's not like immediate. You have some time to produce stuff.
I have a question now, now that we're talking about that. Do we have our insurance, Tomas?
It's on our, it's, it's, we have it, we have the quotes and it's going to be up for next meeting for food.
We're just going to timeline it out. What's the timeline for posting? It was in the beginning, but there's no timeline on posting the meetings?
Yeah. Yeah, that's like two, three slides away.
Oh, wait.
Two slides away.
Oh, wait.
Uh, okay. So, um, next slide. So what's not a meeting? Again, if you're at a conference, so ACHD, some of these like healthcare conferences or League of Cities, whatever it is, that's not a meeting, you're fine. Um, stuff that's of general interest to the public. So even if you're talking about healthcare district business, but it's at a conference, that's fine. But a majority of the board should discuss among themselves district business. So don't huddle in the corner and start talking about an agenda item. Um, and then ceremonial stuff, um, is also not a meeting and it's expressly allowed by the Brown Act. And other public agencies' meetings. So like if a majority of you were at the LAFCO meeting, that's fine too. That doesn't make it a meeting. You're not violating the Brown Act by congregating because the information you're hearing is related, related to the district business. So it would fit that definition of a meeting under the Brown Act. But you're expressly allowed to do that under the Brown Act. Um, okay, next slide. What else is not a meeting? One-on-one agenda briefings. So even if your ultimate CEO did one-on-ones with all seven of you, that's fine, that's not a meeting. Conversations about whether to call a meeting, information-only updates received by the full board, no reply all. And so that's the kind of stuff where I send you FYI, we negotiated the following deal points with ECRMC, here's AR, this is attorney-client privilege, communication, we'll talk about it at the next board meeting in closed session. And that's me giving you one-way information that you can reply directly to me and say, hey, I want to talk about this or no, whatever. But that's usually information giving, given to you in advance of a board meeting so that you can prepare. Um, but you should not reply all to those, to those communications. And staff can also communicate one-way. The only entities which should not communicate one-way is a board member. So any of you shouldn't send an email to all the board unless it's about whether to call a meeting. Um, without annual board retreats, strategic planning sessions, board study sessions, all of those are meetings. You need to have an agenda and you need to have, uh, public access for the public.
So I've got a question.
Mm-hmm.
So earlier you mentioned about having ad hoc committees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the purposes of this, communicating, say I was at an ad hoc or something.
Yeah.
Communicating that information as to information that I've gathered regarding my ad hoc committee, just to give them like a status, is that, no?
So if you're only communicating with your ad hoc, that's not a meeting.
Okay.
Because it's less than a quorum.
Okay.
So a meeting only happens where there's four or more of you. And ad hocs are always three or less.
So what I'm saying is, like I said, if I'm part of this ad hoc committee and I just wanted to update all the members, hey, guys, remember I was going to go and do this?
That's a meeting.
That's a meeting.
You should not do that. The update should happen at a board meeting.
The update should happen.
Yeah, and so we'll have agenda, like standing agenda items. Usually when you form an ad hoc, you'll have a standing agenda item at every board meeting after that that says, update from ad hoc. Sometimes they'll come online and they'll say, we've got no update for it right now. Or sometimes they'll say, hey, we met twice, here's what we talked about, we're making some headway with the appraiser or whatever it is. And you give your update to the full board, but it has to be at an open and notice public meeting.
Just to expand on that, though, as an example, what if, uh, there's information that should be analyzed, you want the board to analyze? Could the information, like the, as an ad hoc member, be provided at Tomas? And then Tomas send an email to everybody, just for information?
That's exactly the way it's supposed to work, is the negotiating committee confers with Tomas, or confers with Legal, confers with whoever, and that person, Tomas, can send you guys emails all day. Not a Brown Act violation. It's only a Brown Act violation if one of you replies all. You can reply to him, no problem. But if you reply to everyone, that's the meeting. But yeah, Tomas can send you emails, no problem, so that you have information in advance of board meetings. I can send you information, and then that would be attorney-client privileged on top of being not a Brown Act violation.
And just a word of caution, in the past, usually when we had any issues or concerns where, the refiles.
People do it on accident, yeah.
A good way around that maybe would be to BCC all the other members? And that way you can't even reply all.
And that's something that the board can need. You can tell us and say, I prefer if you just BCC. The problem with the BCC is many times, board members will say, I can't tell who's on this email. I want to know who's getting the information. Is it just the board, or is the board plus members of the press, or you know, et cetera? So sometimes folks like seeing all the twos. But the big downside is if you hit reply all by accident, then it sucks. But you very well could also BCC everybody. I just, I send it to myself, or I just send it to Katie, and I BCC everyone else, and I say, dear members of the board, and then you know, okay, we're all getting this. But there are sometimes also, the polite way of saying paranoid, paranoid board members who receive BCC communications and are like, my colleague wasn't on it, how can I make, you know, you're sending information, and it's not going out to everyone at the exact same time. You're giving it to us at five, but you gave it to her at nine, right before the. So that's why it's sometimes better to just let everyone see who's on the two. But you have to be aware of that reply.
So Legis, if you say it always like, encourage us like on items to find a Brown Act buddy. Like for, on the city council, like there's five of us, we're like, find a Brown Act buddy. Find that person on whatever topic that, that's who's bringing you your pick, and you guys can talk about it. And then, but other than that?
Don't talk to anyone else, yeah. Sometimes folks do that and say, that's my person that I talked to on the board about board issues. Because sometimes you want to talk to your colleagues on the board, outside of board meetings, about, hey, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna call ACRMC or not? And if it's just one-on-one, or if it's one-on-two, if it's three or less of you, you can go have coffee, you can talk about it, it's okay. But you just can't have that conversation with four or more folks.
And then it can't go from there, right? So one of those three can't talk to anybody else.
Right, you can't take it to someone else, exactly, exactly. That's the serial meeting provision. You've got to be real careful. So, okay, so here's the answer to your question, Director, is, so regular meetings require 72 hours' agenda posting notice. So with our regular Thursday meetings happening at 6:00 PM, the agenda should be posted by no later than Monday at 6:00 PM. Special meetings, like this one, require 24 hours' posting notice. Emergencies are very rarely used. One of the tips that we use often is if you have a regular agenda item, I'm sorry, if you have a regular meeting scheduled, and something comes up between the 72 hours and 24 hours, you can notice a special meeting for the same date and time as the regular meeting, and then just take the action sequentially, or take them all together. So you can say, the regular meeting of the board of directors, there's also a special meeting, and then the special meeting just required the 24 hours posting.
So there's no, there's no provision for a revised agenda? It, it just?
So yes, you can do a revised agenda, but you have to publish a revised agenda 72 hours before the board meeting. You can't revise it less than 72 hours before the board meeting. So this is one of the reasons why agencies will publish their agenda a week before. And then if anything's caught, like, oh, we missed something, or oh, there's a typo, or whatever, they can still revise the agenda five days out, or whatever it is, because they're still within that 72-hour window. Emergencies are very rarely used, and that's the stuff that Katie reads at the front end of the meeting. That's really far true emergencies, like earthquakes, or some crippling disaster that severely impairs public health or safety. You need to have a majority vote to determine that it's an emergency meeting, and that allows you to meet without posting an agenda or giving advance notice. Like, the example, we, I've had to use this for a hospital district once in my 16 years, and it was because a pipe burst in the basement, a sewer pipe, and it flooded the basement of the hospital, which is where their food services were set up. And so, it was a really crippling disaster, because you can imagine, a very big functional hospital has patients that need food, you know? And that's where they would service all the food. But of course you can't do that when there's a sewer break in there. And so, we had to meet like within hours to figure out, okay. And then we had to let emergency contracts for like food trucks to come park and set up, so that we can take food to patients from the food trucks, and then bring on a contractor to like pump the basement and figure out what we were gonna do there. So that satisfied the emergency provision of, of the Brown Act. But other than that, like, we forgot to add something to the agenda, that's not an emergency. That's just like an oops, and you have to figure it out. Okay, so the board sets the time and place for regular meetings. Special meetings are held as necessary between regular meetings. Special meetings can be called by the chair. So the chair can say, we're having a special meeting, and put the agenda out. Or if the chair is not wanting to meet on this thing, but four or more of you do, then a majority of the board can also call a special meeting at any time. So either the chair, or a majority, or ideally, it works for everyone.
Clarification, you want to give, wherever our regular meetings are, date and time?
Yeah. Yes, we already have our regularly scheduled meeting date and time, which is the second Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Thursday, sorry, next Thursday, sorry, thank you, Tomas. So that will be our calendar of regular meetings. And the reason you want to say regular versus special, there's a couple things you can do at regular meetings that you can't do at special meetings. I think I might have a slide on that, but it's not spoiler alert, it's like executive comp. You can't like approve your CEO's contract and the amount you're gonna pay him at a special meeting, because that's considered sketchy now, and you have to do it at a time. But it's a regular meeting that the whole public can be aware. Okay, so what do the agendas need to have on them? They have to have a brief general description of the business to be transacted, it's 20 words or less. The agendas have to be publicly posted on the website, and physically at the location where you're gonna be meeting. There's a couple provisions about like how easy on the website must it be to find. I've checked your website, it's perfect. There's like a one-click thing. You should be one-click away from the agenda at all times, and you are, so you're good. And then be careful with information versus action items. I don't think you guys have that problem on your agenda, but some agencies will have like information item only, information item only. And then when you go to the board meeting, they want to take action on it. And you've put yourself into a difficult position, because the agenda says information only. So I don't think there should be any information only items myself. Everything should be discussion and possible action, to allow yourself flexibility to do something. But some folks like information only, so that they limit the ability to act. It's all strategic. What about the agenda packet? So the packet is a public record, it has to be made publicly available. When you get documents, the public, then the public has a right to documents, so at the same time. So like today, I showed up with the NDAs. Those were not in the agenda packet, because we didn't finalize those terms until last Friday. But when you got it, I have copies for the public, and if the public asks, we'll give them copies too. And then they should be posted, all the agenda packets that should be posted on the website. Next slide. What can the board consider at a meeting? So you can only take action on stuff that's on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, you can't take action on it. You can add items to the agenda if, again, there's work, if there's an emergency, or if there is, there's another provision that's less than an emergency, but more than like any reason. And it's basically, if you need to take immediate action, and the item arose after the agenda was posted. And the most often, or the easiest example here is a lawsuit. So let's say you got served with a lawsuit 48 hours before a regular board meeting, and you need to go in a closed session and talk about it, or you know, whatever. You don't have time to put it on your regular meeting agenda, because the 72 hours has come and gone. But it came up after the 72 hours had come and gone, and there's an immediate need to talk about it. That's an example of something that you can add with a two-thirds vote of the members present to the agenda. Okay, next slide. So public comment, you guys have a very active public. So, public comment, you have to allow the public to comment at regular board meetings on anything they want. At special board meetings, you may limit comments only to agenda items. So they can't just show up and say anything about anything, it has to be related to an item. They have the right to speak before action is taken, including closed sessions. You have a right to say, you can't talk during the general public comment session. I want to, if you're gonna talk about an agenda item, you have to talk about it for that item. Like you can control when the public comments. The public has a right to attend the meeting without having to sign in. You may recall, at the last board meeting, I told the person on Zoom that they weren't allowed to talk unless they disclosed their name. That's a policy decision which this board has the right to make, because Zoom and streaming meetings is not required by law. You don't have to do that. That's a courtesy that you're providing to the public to make the meetings transparent and accessible. So at some point, hopefully, over the next couple board meetings, I'll bring a policy to this board, and you can tell me what you're comfortable with. Because many agencies will stream meetings, but disable chat. So they can't provide public comment, because it becomes a nightmare. And very often, folks are disgruntled in the audience when you show up to a public meeting and a virtual commenter commandeers it, or is allowed to basically troll without having to show their face. We've encountered that a lot, especially with county-wide agencies. Folks just take over the chat, or they'll unmute themselves and start talking. And it's like, you can't do this without showing your face, that's not fair. It's not fair to the folks that are here in person. You can allow that if you want to, but I would counsel against it, because once you let folks unmute, they can say anything, it can be offensive, it can be derogatory, and if they don't have to disclose even who they are, it can subject the district to like allegations of risk mitigation, or lack thereof. And you just, if there's no need, why subject yourself to that risk? So that's the reason I cut the speaker off, because I have been in situations where folks say derogatory or defamatory things without disclosing who they are, and it makes the process of figuring out who they are kind of a nightmare, and subjects the agency to potential risk. Because this is a public forum that's protected by the First Amendment. So people come to the public meetings and they talk. And so some speeches are very protective, but some speech could be defamatory and not be protected. And it's your job to kind of moderate that. So the public is allowed to show up and criticize the district, its employees, the board. They're allowed to say as many negative things about you as they want, as long as it's not illegal speech. So racism, defamatory, insightful, hate speech. Then it's like, get out of here, you're not entitled to do that. But if they show up and say, I think you're doing a really bad job, you have to just sit here and take it. You can't cut them off. You can cut them off after three minutes, but you got to let them say what they are here to say. Your agendas say your time limited to three minutes. So disruptive comment is not permitted. There was a new law that was effective January of last year that allows the board chair to dismiss a member of the public if they're being disruptive. All you have to do is give one warning. Before, before that law, you had, the whole board had to vote on whether or not to eject that person, and then if you voted to eject that person, you had to clear the room. And now you don't have to clear the room anymore, you can just get rid of that person. But you have to give them a warning first, and it's the board chair's call, not the whole board.
So if they call a point of order, is that the warning, or do you specifically have to warn them?
You specifically have to warn that individual. You have to say, ma'am, or sir, you're being disruptive, and if you continue to disrupt the conduct of the board, we're gonna dismiss you from here. And then if they keep going, out of here. And then that's when security comes in handy. I don't know if you have security, but you do, sometimes you'll need it, but then it's awkward if they refuse to leave, and so sometimes security's handy if you know it's gonna be contentious. The other thing I don't want to skip past is, it's not a conversation. So boards get into this group all the time, and I get it, it's very hard. But if a member of the public comes up and asks you a question, you're not supposed to answer it, actually. Because that's not an agenda item, you're not supposed to say, yes. This is all totally subjective and subject to your good judgment, right? So if someone says, do you plan on talking about this at the next board meeting? It's fine for you to say, yes, we will, right? But you really shouldn't get in back-and-forths with the public during public comment, because it could rise to the level of being an unlawful discussion under the Brown Act if it's not agendized. So don't, don't try not to get into that habit, and that's one of the things legal councils for, is to remind the board and remind members of the public that actually the board is not supposed to respond to comments, but thank you for your comment, and let's move on. You know, it's an easy thing for the lawyer to do.
Quick question, just for clarification, because it's a little, I need to structure a little differently than what I'm used to. Public comments allowed before each action item?
Yeah, so it depends, you can do it however you want. You can take all the public comment at the front end of the board meeting. You can also ask to hold public comment for each item, and they can, they can speak before that item. So it's your call, and you will generally have a policy that talks about it. And I'll prepare one for you. It's like a one-page, very simple policy. But it depends on what you want, right? Like, do you want to hold comments until that item? Or do you want to just take them all at the front end?
Are we doing both? Is that how we're doing it?
Yeah, so usually, yeah, we'll have public comments at the beginning, and it's usually for something that's not on the agenda, and then if they have, you know, comments about the agenda item, then they get three minutes.
And so, it should be limited to three minutes per speaker, not per item. So the same person should come up and give three minutes on item one, three minutes on item two, three minutes on item three. It's three minutes for you, what do you want to talk about? And the other thing is, a good reason to ask, hey, does a member of the public have a comment before each item? If someone showed up late, and they didn't get to the public portion at the very beginning, is you want to give them that kind of grace period. So it is a good practice to have folks, to just ping the public on if they might want to comment on this item before the item is taken. Okay, next slide.
But if there is a member of the audience that can be called upon in order to ask them a question, or to, for clarification, that's perfectly fine, right? Even if it's outside of their three minutes, or should that be limited?
So if the board has a question of someone in the audience, because they have specific factual or other information, no problem. That doesn't count towards their three minutes. Three minutes, public comment, and you have to be careful, because you want to make sure they're answering your question and not soapboxing. Because then other members of the public will say, hold on, you cut me off after three minutes, but you're giving him eight. It's because I'm a woman. It's because I'm Latina, it's because whatever it is. And then you start getting into protected categories, and you subject the district to risk. So.
So at that point, we're calling on them because of their expertise, not because they're a member of the public?
Exactly. Yeah, you should really never, in my recommendation, poll the members of the public on anything, really. Like, what do you guys feel about this? Like, that shouldn't be part of the discussion at board meetings, because it's just asking to open up a can of worms.
So I was kind of confused about that too, because I went to a black hole, and and I did see some of the members ask, like, Mr. Tomas Ollinoffrom, he was a board member, he's a board member from ECRMC. So they were asking him questions, and multiple times he had to come up.
Right, and that's okay, because he's helping them in their deliberative process. It's called the deliberative process, it's the board's process for figuring out how you're gonna act. And you're entitled to do that out loud, here at the dais, in real time.
But if you refuse not to?
Sure, they can say, no, I'm not gonna answer your question, and you know, okay. But, but it shouldn't subject the board to any criticism about public comment, because it's really not public comment, you're asking for information, or, or opinions, or whatever you're asking for.
So, I just want to clarify, so the three-minute timeline is per person? So it's like, if somebody gets up and speaks at the beginning, and they use up their time, and then we come to something in the agenda, then they don't get to speak again?
Correct. If, so, I should say, your either policy or agendas should be really clear on that. So that you don't, we don't want to be in a doctious situation with a member of the public, ever. And the board can always extend that grace too, and say, oh, if you were not aware, you already spoke. But really, it should be, for time management purposes, limited to three minutes per person. And that could be two minutes. Two minutes has been okay by the courts. Three minutes is very standard, it's more standard, and has also been less by the courts. You're allowed to cap total public comment, so some folks, for example, Los Angeles, L.A. Unified School District, they'll be there for five hours of public comments if they have it. So they cap it at an hour. They say, after an hour, if you're not one of the first guys in here, too bad. We're not letting you public comment. And the courts have also said that that's okay. As long as it's reasonable, you're giving the public a reasonable opportunity to comment. So, you. So you shouldn't, you know, let someone come up and speak for three minutes. If you, for example, if they filled out a speaker slip for item seven and then they come up during general public comments and talk about item two, the board chair or the secretary or whoever's kind of monitoring public comments should say, ma'am, I know that you filled out a speaker slip for item seven. Are you gonna split your time? Minute and a half, minute and a half? Or I just want you to be aware that there's a three-minute total limit for public comment. So where do you wanna use it? And they could do a minute, a minute, a minute or whatever. But you can also decide, this is policy. So you can decide to give them six minutes or you can decide to give them three minutes per item. You could do that if you wanted to, but you have to treat everybody the same. So just be aware that if you give everyone three minutes per item, you might have the same guy coming up and doing three minutes on every single item. And then you have to let everyone else do the same thing. And so that's, that's why it's good to kind of have like a.
They have the agenda, so they know what's on the agenda already, so.
I do have a question as well, another one. So I've observed some of the council meetings, like for the city of Telescaul, and there's sometimes public members that come up to speak and they say they have a medical, some type of disability. They're not specific to what, but they say, well, I have a disability. And so they grant them extra time without obviously disclosing what that disability is. So is there any validity to that request?
Yes.
And then what's the timeframe that you can give them in addition to whatever three minutes?
So the rule of thumb, and this applies to disabled folks and to folks that need interpreters. So sometimes there's folks that, I only speak Mandarin or I only speak Spanish and I need a translator. And they have worked out a translator ahead of time. They've brought their translator with them. You should grant them twice the time. So if you are three minutes limit, they should get six minutes. Because they have to talk through an interpreter and you don't wanna discriminate against those.
But they speak English. That person that I've seen?
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. So the same with the, I mean, it depends on the disability, right? Like, if you're in a wheelchair, that shouldn't preclude you from giving three minutes public comment. But for all we know, and we can't get into folks' personal medical history, they have a limited cognitive ability to speak or to process comments or to, you know, whatever. If they're just slow, then the rule of thumb is twice the time. So maybe they get six minutes where everybody else gets three. And then you'll notice on your agendas, is there's always a permission at the end that says, in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and individuals requesting special accommodations can contact the district for special accommodations. And that stuff like, you know, CCTV stuff or speaking extra loud or trying to arrange for an interpreter or trying to arrange for a sign language person if the person needs ASL. And the district's obligation is to do everything it can, reasonable efforts, to try to accommodate that disability. So if someone says, I'm deaf and I can't hear, I need a sign language person for the next board meeting, and they give you 24 hours or 48 hours notice, we should try to figure out that ASL, you know, get a person on board, come and pay for it. It's not, it's not their fault they have a disability and you have to figure it out for them. So it's very possible the person that you're talking about is totally BSing the council. But there's really no way of determining that without getting into that person's personal health information, which you can.
What about, I've seen where people will be like, you know, you cut somebody off and I've seen people go, oh no, I'm giving them my three minutes.
Yeah, so that's another policy thing and that happens often at first school districts. For example, as they'll say, I wanna cede my time so that one person can talk for 10 minutes. I'm gonna cede my time too. I'm gonna cede my time too. That's another policy based thing. You can say, that's not allowed. Or you can say, that is allowed. But the problem is, is when you've said, that's not allowed and then they sue you for it, you'll know whether you're gonna win or not. So folks have sued over that and the school district has won and said, no. We are, cause the board is empowered by the Brown Act to figure out how you wanna run your meetings. And as long as it's reasonable, you know, like, it's not, other members of the public can say, that's BS. I would've brought like two kids with me if I thought it would get me an extra six minutes, you know? Like, that's not fair. So you can say no and cut them off. And you can say yes and allow them to cede their time. But be aware when you allow anyone to cede their time, you have to allow everyone to cede their time.
Can you assist them a little bit?
I think that's a policy. I really think we need to.
I agree. I think it's.
We've had some issues where it's like one person said something and then another person wants to like come back up and say something. You know, I think, I didn't, that's one thing I didn't realize it was per person. I thought it was like per.
Per item.
Per item or per issue. And that per person, as long as we make it clear and it's fair.
Right.
Then, you know, because we're not supposed, I mean, we do our business in public, but it's not like we're, like you said, interacting to where they're now interacting to interact with us. And yeah, it gets a little.
So your agenda says, time limit for each speaker is three minutes. And then a total of 15 minutes shall be allocated for each item. So the, what, the good thing to do, and I talked to, and I talked about this ahead of the last meeting, luckily we didn't even use it, is who is your enforcer? Only allowed for limited topics. You can't just break into a closed session for any reason. Hospital trade secrets is something that's specifically, oh, oh no, sorry. The most common ones are litigation, threatened, existing or anticipated. You don't have to say who you're thinking about suing. If something happened and the public doesn't realize it happened, you don't have to put yourself on blast and say, oh, we accidentally leaked a bunch of personal data and so we need to talk about it in closed session. You don't have to say the basis for your closed session. You just say anticipated litigation. And it's either significant exposure to litigation or you're considering suing someone or it's existing. We've already been sued. If it's existing, then you have to say the name of the case on the agenda. Another basis for closed session is personnel evaluation or a termination or any kind of feedback you wanna give to your chief executive can happen in closed session. Real estate negotiations can happen in closed session. So the updates that we give the board on ECRC, for example, that can happen in closed session under the real property negotiations. You have to identify the property and the negotiator. Labor negotiations, if you're dealing with unions or potential unions, those conversations can happen in closed session and anything related to the public's security. So even if it's like, we're considering this like software program and we need to identify the weak points and where there's potential exposure or whatever it is, that can happen in closed session, cause you don't want the public knowing about the weak points in your software system. And then hospital trade secrets is something that you need to healthcare districts. If you are going to initiate a new district service program or facility or service. And premature disclosure would likely deprive the district of economic benefit. So if you're worried that talking about it in an open session will have someone come in and swoop in on your idea, then you can talk about it in closed session. But you are not allowed to have a closed session discussion about the sale of the district, the contract for management of the district, the lease of district facilities to a nonprofit or a for-profit. That all has to happen in open session. So there's very specific instances where you're allowed to be enclosed, allowed to be in open. And then there's congruent provisions for city and county hospitals. But basically those are the same goals for any public hospital or healthcare. Hearings to consider reports of hospital medical audits or quality assurance committees. That happens in closed, because again, when everything's peachy keen, no problem telling the public that you guys are running a great ship. But if there's issues with quality, you wanna be able to have a very candid discussion about that in closed session. So that you're not subjecting the district to a lawsuit or riling up the public. But if you're considering withdrawing someone's privileges, so a doctor, doctors have privileges at hospitals. And it's a very, California is a very complicated. Healthcare districts don't hire doctors. They hire medical staff. And the medical staff hires doctors. And then there's a quality committee and it's very complicated. So if you are considering withdrawing someone's privileges, that's considered a property right. And you would have to hold a public hearing that's open to the public before you make that decision, if the person asks for it. The person might say, I want this in closed session. I don't want everyone hearing about it. But if that person thinks I'm being persecuted or I'm being whatever, I wanna do this to let the whole public know while you're firing me or whatever it is, that they are entitled. It's their call, whether it's closed session or open session. So there's some safe harbor descriptions. So in the back of your handbag binder that I made, when you go to the Brown Act section, there are safe harbor provisions and you can read what they are. They're in here. It's a pretty easy way of identifying what is gonna be on your agenda and what you're gonna talk about. So closed session is never for budget discussions or general planning or trainings. Only essential persons may be in closed session. So this has come up when folks say, I have staff and I need my aide to come in and take minutes for me. Or I need my, my, you know, chief of staff to come in and tell me, remind me how I'm gonna vote on this or, you know, whatever it is. There's an A D opinion from last year that says, no, that's not. You can't do that. The only people who are allowed in closed session are the people who the board has deemed essential to that closed session for like some factual or business purpose. So usually that's your CEO, that's your legal counsel. And if there's a consultant or like your negotiator for the real estate, they're allowed in. But someone that's beneficial just to one board member is not allowed in closed session anymore. They were for a while. And then of course, what happened in closed session stays in closed session. And then there are reports out. The question I always get is, is everything we do, if we take action in closed session, do we have to report it out? The answer is, no. You only have to report out what the Brown Act tells you you have to report out. So if you make a decision, a vote in closed session, that may be subject to a report or it may not be. So for example, if you're in closed session and you authorize a settlement agreement with another party, if you are the first signature, you don't have to report it out. Because the contract is not final yet. They haven't signed it. If you're the second signature and they've already signed it and agreed to the terms, then you have to report it out. So it's very specific, very complicated. And it's the job of your legal counsel to know when you have to report out and when you don't have to report out. So there's various rules for executive comp or top employees and personnel matters. Like I said before, the board cannot take action regarding executive comp at a special meeting. Closed sessions can and should include performance reviews, discussions about whether goals are met. But they cannot include a discussion on compensation except for a reduction in comp if you're gonna demote someone or discipline someone. And then the board has to verbally report summaries of executive compensation before final action is taken. And what that looks like is you go in, you have a review of your chief officer, you come out and then you say, the board discussed, we think Mr. so-and-so is doing a great job. We've discussed a salary of X amount of dollars per year and a car allowance every month and these kind of benefits generally. And then you have to take action on that in open session. But you have to do like a verbal summary, so that it's not like sneaking in. Because that's City of Bell, for those of you that remember that scandal, was like, created these rules. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so minutes. What's required of your minutes? This is also a policy-driven thing. Some folks like basically transcripts of everything that happened. I recommend against that. It subjects you to scrutiny and what matters is your action. The action you took, did you approve it or did you not approve it? So the Brown Act requires that actions be transcribed in the minute. And so that means you have to say in your minutes, who made the motion, who seconded the motion and how everybody voted. So it can say unanimous, but if one person voted no, you have to identify the person that voted no in the minutes. So generally what I recommend is like a very succinct summary of the discussion that took place and then the actions that took place. But if you, for whatever reason, want very detailed minutes, you could do that too. Okay, the next one is a hot, hot item. It's teleconferencing in a post-COVID world. So for many, many, for about two years, you could do virtual meetings because of COVID. Now you can't anymore because we're not under a declared state of emergency. What you can do is 82449 meetings. And this is really important for board members to know about because it's crummy to realize you could've attended a board meeting virtually had you known about these rules. So 82449 is effective until January 1st, 2026. It allows board members to remotely participate in board meetings in a different way than before. So the old rules, which I'll get into later, always allowed you to teleconference in, but were very burdensome. This allows you to teleconference in without disclosing where you're teleconferencing from, without opening up your location to members of the public. You can just zoom in from your house or from your office under 82449. But only if you have either an emergency circumstance or just cause. An emergency circumstance is defined as a physical or medical, a family medical emergency that prevents the board member from attending in person. If you are asking for an emergency appearance, the board has to vote and say, yes, we're gonna allow you to appear. So examples of that, it's supposed to be a medical emergency, but folks have used, for example, one folks, one guy said, my car broke down. I'm on the side of the road, my car broke down. It's an emergency. I can't be there physically here in person. And the board voted to let him appear remotely under the 82449. Just cause is if you have a childcare or caregiver role that requires you to participate. So if you've got kids at home and your nanny called in sick or whatever it is, you, that is a just reason to participate remotely. A contagious illness, this is the most frequently used one. Because folks sometimes just can't make it and then they say, I feel ill. Or I'm starting to feel a cold. Come on. And out of an abundance of caution to my fellow board members, I don't wanna get you guys sick. So I'm gonna appear remotely at the board meeting on Thursday or whatever it is. I have strep throat, whatever. A need related to a physical or mental disability that's not accommodated at the meeting or if you're on official travel for another agency, then you can remote in. If you have a just cause basis, the board doesn't have to vote on it. You're entitled by the statute to appear remotely. So next slide, let's go over what the requirements are for this. You've already got this pretty much on lock here. So you guys shouldn't have a problem if someone wants to 82449. Then we would just have to adjust your agenda to have a placeholder for requests for remote appearance. And so in order to teleconference in, you don't have to identify where you're teleconferencing from. You don't have to post the agenda at your remote location. You do under the old rules. But the requirements are that a majority of you, so four or more, has to be here in person. Everyone can't remote in on the same day. And you have to give the public access to the Zoom or to the phone call or to whatever. Whatever, however the board member is zooming in, that's how the public should be allowed to zoom in too. And it has to be on the agenda ahead of time. So that's why 82449 is easy to take advantage of when you're always streaming or when you're always kind of have a Zoom link, because then they can, they can take advantage of it. The next slide. So the remote board member has to notify the district as soon as possible if they need to participate remotely. They have to provide a general description of the reason. So you have to say, I have, I'm coming down with a cold and I wanna appear remotely or I have childcare obligations. You don't have to disclose personal medical information or a diagnosis or your disability, but you do have to give a general description of your reason. And it's okay to give notice at the very beginning of a meeting, cause sometimes that's when emergencies happen. But if, the sooner you can give notice, the better to make sure that the district can accommodate your request for remote appearance. Oddly, I don't know why this made it into the statute, but before the board takes any action, the remote board member has to publicly disclose whether or not there's an adult in the room with them. And if there is an adult in the room with them, you have to say what the nature of your relationship to that person is. This is, I think, because of lobbyists. I think like sometimes there's lobbyists in the room when you're remote and that's what it's intended to. But what it, what it has resulted is people be like, my wife is in the kitchen. So it happens, but. And then, so individual board members, you can only participate remotely for just cause twice a year, two times in a calendar year, per board. So if you're on the finance committee and you're on the board, you can appear at two board meetings and you can appear at two finance committee meetings under 82449. And then when you add the emergency circumstance, you can participate remote, you cannot participate remotely for any of the reasons, more than three consecutive months or 20% of regular board meetings within a year. Oh yeah, this is like an example I used for Heffernan. Was if you have 11, if you have 11 regular meetings per year, per year, you're capped at two times per year because of the 20% rule. So there's no current guidelines on special board meetings, so there's, I think, some flexibility there, but. The best way to do this is to have a form, which I have. And it's like a one-pager and you just say. And it's like a one pager and you just say, Adriana Ochoa, the date of the board meeting, April 1st. And there's a checkbox, which basis are you appearing under? You just check the box contagious illness or whatever. And then there's two lines that let you say, I am feeling sick or I came down with COVID or whatever it is. I, my, my school's daycare, my kids' daycare are closed. That's it. And then you just sign it and then you submit it. And that's what we include in the record so that you've met all your A B two, four, four, nine obligations. And it's a checklist and it's easy and there's reminders at the bottom. The other thing is you have to, you'll see it here on the administrative requirements. You have to identify your, or you have to have a two-way audio visual. So under A B two, four, four, nine, you have to have your camera on, that's what that means. And then you have to roll call all your votes instead of all in favor, I. If you're, if one board member is up in virtual, all of it has to be roll call. The other thing is that you have to, if there's a disruption in your Zoom link or in your internet that causes your Zoom link to crash, you can't take action on anything until that's restored. So.
Even if you have a quorum?
Even if you have a quorum because the public has arguably relied on the A B two, four, four, nine as like, board members shouldn't get courtesies that the public doesn't also get. So if one board member is appearing remotely over A B two, four, four, nine and your Zoom link crashes, you're supposed to stop. Practically, what does that mean? Can you continue talking about business? Sure. There's no remedy, like a lot of the Brown Act provisions have no teeth. So it tells you what you're supposed to do, but if you don't do it, there's no downside. You're not going to get, there's no basis for a lawsuit or there's no basis. So this is kind of one of those where it's like, a member of the public, if you take action on something after your Zoom link has crashed, there's a risk benefit analysis that you have to do and it's just practical. If you need to move on this contract and you can't wait for your Zoom link to be restored, my recommendation would be even though you're not allowed to do it under A B two, four, four, nine, do it, keep your fingers crossed that no one sues you over it. If they do want to sue you, they have to send you a cease and desist letter under the Brown Act first. They have to give you a warning, hey, you did this thing and you did it illegally. Either the Brown Act cure it or I'm going to sue you. They have to do that within 60 days. If they don't do it within 60 days, they can sue you. It's a real short statute limitation. And if they send you that letter, cure it. Okay, we're going to have an open meeting, we're going to do the item and we're going to take the vote again. And then you've cured and there's no basis for them to file a lawsuit. So there's ways around it. But if all things being equal, it's not urgent, then you should stop. And like wait until the Zoom link is restored before resuming your business. If all seven of you are here or if whatever, five of you are here and no board member is appearing remotely and you've only provided the Zoom link out of, as a courtesy to the public and then your Zoom link crashes, you can keep going. You can keep doing your business. It's only, you only have to stop if a board member is appearing on Zoom. Okay, so the traditional teleconferencing rules still apply, which is the next slide. The old rules for teleconferencing in is you can teleconference in, but you have to identify in the agenda where you're conferencing from, the address. So if it's your home, you can put your home address. You have to make it available to the public. You have to post an agenda, 72 hours or 42 hour or 24 hours, depending on what kind of meeting it is, outside your location, so outside your home or outside your conference room at the Hilton if you're in Hawaii or whatever it is. You have to post, physically post an agenda outside your hotel room or whatever it is. You can't, you can't take a meeting under the Brown Act by your car, like in a moving vehicle. And then the votes has to be by roll call and your location has to be accessible to the public. So if someone wants to sit right next to you, you've got to tell them where you're at and let them sit next to you. That's why A B two, four, four, nine is great because you don't have to do any of those things under A B two, four, four, nine. Okay, so brought up board member compliance. Try to let folks know as early as possible what you're going to do and whether it's A B two, four, four, nine meeting or if it's a traditional teleconference meeting. The risks of non-compliance with teleconferencing. So it's like, I don't, I want to call in, but I don't want, I don't have a basis under A B two, four, four, nine. And I also don't want to disclose my home address. You know, I just want to call in. You can actually do that, the board member can call in, but they can't count towards quorum and they can't vote. If you violate these provisions, like I said, someone can send you a letter to cure or correct the actions. Lawsuits to stop violations or void pass actions. So like set aside that resolution or set aside that contract would be the lawsuit. And if you lose that lawsuit, the person that sued you gets their attorney's fees and costs. So it can be very bad to get sued according to the Brown Act. But the one shining star is you get that opportunity to cure. So you can take advantage of that. Okay, public records, I'll try to go quickly. This is only three slides, but what are public records? So the statute says, any writing containing information relating to the conduct of the people's business prepared, owned, used or retained by the local agency regardless of the physical form or characteristic. So that means a memo, an agenda, an agenda packet, a contract, notes, handwritten notes, copies, boxes, voicemails, videos, pictures, emails, texts, regardless of the manner in which they're stored. Eventually, once you start doing business, you're going to adopt a records retention policy, which will tell you how long we keep stuff for. But for the purposes of this discussion, on the next slide, you see what types of records are exempt. So like I said, personnel records, medical records, attorney-client communications, litigation records while the litigation is pending, trade secrets, personal information, home address, home cell phone number, social security number. All of that stuff is redacted or not provided. But emails and texts that are kept in the ordinary course of business could be public records. Public records requests, who can make a request for public records? Anyone, doesn't matter if they're a U S citizen or not. Doesn't matter if they live in the jurisdiction of the district or not. Anyone can make a C P R A request and ask to see records. They can make the C P R A request through a phone call, through an email or through a letter. Any kind of writing or a phone call is a way to make a public records request. Eventually, I keep saying this, you'll adopt the policy on how to, how you want P R A requests to be submitted. You can create a form and say, if you want records, fill out our form. And that's fine too. You can charge for copies, you can charge for data extraction. If they're asking you to produce stuff electronically, you can not charge because that doesn't cost you any money. You cannot charge for staff time. Once someone sends you a P R A request, you have a duty to respond within 10 days and tell them if you have a record like that or not. Once, that's just a duty to respond. In 10 days, you can say, they say, I want all the emails that you sent over the past year. After 10 days, you can say, we received your request. There are responsive records. It's going to take us three months to compile them and send them over and review them for privilege. And then the actual, like, when do you have to produce? The statute says you have to produce it promptly. What does promptly mean? It depends. So you have to like save face. If court was looking at you and said, did it really take you 12 months to produce 10 emails? Like, that's never going to win. But did it take you 12 months to produce 12,000 emails? It's probably fine. Folks do rolling productions, different ways of being reasonable with respect to production.
In case you think this doesn't happen, Heffernan will just ask to provide 10 years of data to the public. And they just spent another one, I think, for a few years. But we had all this rule and it costs a lot of staff time.
Yeah, happens all the time. It's brutal. It's brutal. And mostly they come from like members of the public, but also very often publication, right? Newspapers. Newspapers are the most common ones that do P R A requests because they need information for their stories. So be aware of the P R A and when in doubt, you should not get a P R A request. So if someone says, dear Chair of Burnwood, Burnwood, I want to see your, you, you don't respond. You forward that to your C E O, you forward it to legal and then we respond on behalf of the district. Because even though your information is part of the public record, it's not your obligation to take them and do it yourself. Okay, conflicts of interest. I'm sorry, we're almost done. So these are the big laws that govern conflicts. The first is the Political Reform Act. What it basically says is you cannot make or participate in making a decision that you have a financial interest in. So should we buy this building to create a new urgent care? And you own the property right next door. And you know that that's going to make your property's valuations skyrocket. You should not participate in making that decision. You shouldn't lobby your board members on the side about it. And you should, at the board meeting, when it comes up, you have to disclose your financial interests. I own the building next door to the place where you're considering. And so I have a material financial interest in this transaction and you have to recuse yourself, which means you have to say, I am not going to participate in this or vote. You have to stand up and you have to leave the room for the vote and the discussion.
Again, I have a question. Did you give up on that previous?
Yeah.
Somebody said, I, I don't property, but it's through a trust. Is that, is that compensating?
Yes, that counts just the same. And if you don't own it, but your spouse owns it, that counts too. Your spouse's property is your property. If it's a contract for the construction of the playground and it's your spouse or your child's contractor, the, they run the business that's going to do it. Anyone in your immediate family, which is spouse or kids, is considered your financial interest too. There's some dispute, case law about adult children, but still common law, even like nephews, nieces, stuff like that should be disclosed under the common law. Violation is a misdemeanor. So we're not talking about the district getting slapped with some fines. It's you and your personal capacity as an individual director can be charged with a misdemeanor and civil penalties, so like fines, that you can be banned from holding office if you're convicted and found guilty of violating the Political Reform Act. So what is a material financial interest? Here's the biggest ones. If you have an investment in a business, so if you're the director, officer, partner, trustee, employee or management of a business that impacts you in an amount of $2,000 or more, then that's considered a material financial interest. Real property interest, so homes, my home example or building example. Income, so if you're considering a deal with the company and you work for that company, that's, that's the source of your income. And then there's also gifts. Totally more than $590 within 12 prior months equals disqualification. So sometimes folks will contribute to your campaigns or give you a gift or take you up to a nice dinner. That in and of itself is not illegal. You have to disclose gifts in amounts of $50 or more that are given to you on your Form 700. So the Form 700 is the form I provided, it's in here. You have to file an assuming office Form 700 with the county. We will adopt a conflict of interest code at the next board meeting that talks about other disclosures. But on that Form 700, you have to say, so and so took me to dinner and it was a hundred dollar dinner. They bought me some steak and we talked about, you know. We don't have to say what you talked about, we have to say the person that gave you the gift. So that everybody in the public can see who's giving you gifts for things because it informs their perception of how you're voting. If someone gives you gifts, they take you to $600 dinners that year and the total is now more than the gift limit, which the gift limit is $590 until the end of this calendar year, then you're disqualified from voting on anything relating to that person or that, the person who gave you the gift. So you're not disqualified if it's less than $590, but you have to disclose it. Okay? Very tricky gifts, so always ask questions because it's your personal, you're at stake, right? So, and if you're uncomfortable asking questions of your legal counsel, which totally would make sense, be aware of the fact that legal counsel for the district is legal counsel for the district, not for you as an individual. And since you have individual liability associated with conflicts of interest, you have to either get your own personal counsel for advice or you could always hit up the F P P C. F P P C dot advice dot gov. They, advice at F P P C dot com is the email address for free advice. There's a hotline you can call, it's anonymous. Or you can say who you are and you can say, do I have a conflict? Here's what I own, here's the decision and they'll tell you and you can rely on their advice. You can also get opinion letters if it's very important and it rises to the point of an opinion letter. So gift exceptions. So if someone gives you an awesome gift, I'm going to buy you a car, here you go. And you say, thanks, oh shoot, I can't accept this because it's beyond the gift limit. You can return it within 30 days and then you haven't violated anything. You can donate it to a nonprofit organization within 30 days and then you haven't violated the gift provision. If it's a gift from a family member, you're fine. There's other examples, like if it was your wedding, if it's a bereavement gift, if you suffered a loss, if they're actually your next door neighbor and, or you've got a longstanding friendship with this person and you guys gave gifts to each other way before you became an elected official, there's all kinds of carve-outs. Campaign contributions can be over the gift limit because those are regulated by campaign finance laws. That doesn't qualify as a gift, it's qualified as a contribution. Raffles, gift exchanges, there's, there's a different, a bunch of different carve-outs. So when you're not sure whether something is a gift or if it's illegal, just ask. The Political Reform Act requires disclosure of certain personal financial interests by decision makers all the time in your Form 700 anyway. So April 1st, sometimes it's April 2nd or 3rd, it's always like the first Tuesday or something. April 1st is the general deadline for filing your Form 700s. So by April 1th of each year, you need to file your Form 700 with the county of Imperial for the prior calendar year. And the Form 700, Procopio does a free 30-minute webinar on how to fill out a Form 700 every year around February or March. So I'll let you know what those are if you need a refresher or if you just need someone to talk you through how to fill it out. It's free, we offer it to all of our clients. You can also ask the F P P C and they can walk you through how to fill out your Form 700. You basically put your name, where you work, where you get your income, if you own property, the jurisdiction, so that folks know where your own property, if you're making decisions that could impact your property. And then other folks have to fill out Form 700s too. Very typically, your C E O, legal counsel, folks who are influencing the financial decisions of the district often have to file Form 700s on behalf of the district. Okay, next one. What do I do if I have a conflict? So under the Political Reform Act, like I said, you have to publicly identify the conflict, recuse yourself from voting and leave the room. You can speak when the general public asks to speak. And if you're not sure, call 1-800-ASK-FPPC or advice@fppc.com. So the Political Reform Act applies to board members. And there's no defense or indemnity. There's a four-year statute of limitations for violations, but this D N O insurance that the law is going to present you with next month, that's not going to defend you, that's not going to insure you if you violate a conflict of interest. It'll, it'll, if you make a mistake or if the district makes a mistake, well, it'll cover you in many other instances. But if it's a conflict, you don't get covered.
So quick question, so this applies once you convene and get sworn in as a board?
Yes. No, 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 this also applies if you're a candidate for office, actually, yeah. And then if the board enters into like a contract or whatever, or if you enter into a transaction and the person that has the conflict has properly disclosed and recused yourself, the board is good to move forward with that item. Unless, next slide, 1090 applies. So 1090 is the other big conflict law. This one is super strict. And I think the ramifications could even be like felonies. So 1090 is about contracts, not decisions. So the budget is a decision, for example. Are we going to do that playground or not? That's a decision. A contract to enter into services with another person, that's when 1090 kicks in. Also Political Reform Act because there's a material financial interest, but 1090 only applies to contracts. So the law says you can't participate in making or attempt to influence a contract in which you have a financial interest. And so that's where if you're considering giving the contract for the building of the playground to the company that's owned by your wife, it's a 1090 conflict and not only can you not recuse yourself out of 1090, the board is presumed to be conflicted out. And the contract, if you approve it, it's not just voidable, it's void. It never happened. It's an illegal contract from the very beginning. So very, very difficult because it's actually So very, very difficult, because it's actually more difficult for the person you're contracting with, because... I think you can go to the next slide, yeah. Because if you contract with someone and they start building your playground, and the 1090 thing, no one realized it at the time, and they built your playground, but it was actually a void contract the whole time, the district gets the money back, and you keep the playground. And the elected official with the conflict could get persecuted for a violation of 1090 by the district attorney. So pretty harsh penalty and pretty harsh remedies. So yeah, felony persecution, civil and administrative sanctions. And if you are convicted of violating 1090, you're forever disqualified from holding office in the state of California. So be aware of that. And the next one's bribery. This is pretty, everyone knows what this is, but it's good to give the definition just in case you're not sure. It's if you agree to receive something in exchange for your vote. Or if someone offers you something and you accept it, and there's a quid pro quo, and you didn't realize it, there wasn't an express verbal, I will vote for this thing if you give me this, but it is presumed like you accepted that, then that's bribery. People can't pay for your votes. And that's, or give you something in exchange for your vote, something of, you know, influence to you. Like, I'm going to accept your kid into my private school if you vote this way. You didn't get any money in exchange, but you can't accept something of value in exchange for a vote or an opinion. So even like if you get on stage and you say, I endorse this person because they've given you, like, it's... That quid pro quo is illegal in the state of California. And you could be in prison, in state prison, for two to four years, and you could have to pay restitution. And then attempted bribery is also a crime. So if you intended to vote a certain way in exchange for money, and they can prove that up, intent is very hard to prove, but it has the same consequence. So anyway, conviction results, and then you're ineligible from holding office after you've been convicted of bribery. Other conflicts of interest considerations. So perception, the appearance of impropriety, so maybe it's your second cousin twice-removed who has the contractor license for the playground. There's no conflict of interest there, but you may want to disclose it anyway, just to avoid the appearance. You can still vote on it, you can still act on it, you can recuse yourself, you can do whatever you're comfortable with, but that's another consideration to keep in mind. There's common law rules about conflicts that are separate from 1090 and Political Reform Act. And then be aware of the nepotism issue, which, you know, hiring your family is not illegal, but claims of nepotism are never fun. And they could be illegal if it's one of your immediate family members and you're benefiting financially from that decision. So those are the conflicts, high level, actually. I know it took a long time, but there's, we could do like probably 30 minutes on each slide if you wanted to. So do you have any other questions for today? This is important just to remind you all to file your Form 700s if you haven't already. And the Brown Act stuff is very big for new boards because you always want to start jumping on the, what are we going to do, and what are we going to need, and we have such important business, so that's good for you guys to be aware of as we go into the season of negotiations.
I have a question regarding conflict. I sell real estate. And let's say I have a client who's a doctor, right? And he has a house he wants to sell. And I've already got a pre-existing, like, this is true scenario now. And I've already got a pre-existing, I've already worked with the doctor before. Is that a conflict?
Doesn't sound like it. It just happens to be a doctor for one of the hospitals in town, and you're going to sell their, no. So one of the like rules of thumb for conflict is, does it benefit you personally differently than the members of the public? So like, if you are... Like nurses could be on the board, for example, sometimes. Well, that's tricky, it's by example. Budgets, that's an easy one, a budget. So let's say one of your family members works for ECRNC. They're a nurse at ECRNC. That's not a reason for you to not be a board member here. And you're voting on a budget that is approving a 3% raise for all nurses, or whatever it is. Is that going to financially benefit you? Yes, because your wife is going to get a raise. But is it going to benefit you uniquely? No, it's going to benefit all the nurses, along with all the other employees that are getting that raise. And so then you're, then it's not a material financial interest. There's a lot of other exceptions, there's like 17 remote interest exceptions, and then there's like a long list of what's called non-interests. And it's stuff like that. If you are, if you are a board member of a nonprofit that's considering business with the district, is that a conflict? The answer is no, because there's a specific carve-out for appointed officials who are board members of nonprofits. Like, the laws were written in a way that shouldn't prevent you from living a good life, like a life of public service. It's really just to prevent sketchiness. So if you're in real estate and you have clients who are doctors, and you sold their house and you're making commission off of it, there's nothing illegal about that. If that doctor comes in and asks to be the new CEO of IBHD, and you've just made a bunch of money off of them, and you know that they have three more properties that they're going to sell, and then you're like, let's make him CEO! Then you have to disclose or recuse, you know, you have to figure that out. These conflicts of interest scenarios are incredibly fact-intensive. They're always, the facts are what matter. So that's why it's really good, if you're not sure, when in doubt, ask. You can always ask me, because I'm attorney, I'm attorney, and it's attorney's not privileged, and no one will ever know we had that conversation. But if it gets to be in a position where you might be adverse to the board, because maybe you have a conflict, then I might tell you, ask the FPPC, you have to get separate counsel on this because my loyalties are to the board, which means however four of you are voting any particular given day, because the majority of the board is what determines who the board is. So that's why advice@FPPC dot gov is really valuable. And they're really responsive, they'll usually respond within 24 hours if you give them the pertinent facts and say, is this a conflict or I have to recuse myself? They'll give you the advice you're asking for. Any other questions?
I do. So I have a family member that recently had a knee injury. And obviously, being on this board now, these doctors are like, oh, are you on this board or whatever? Yeah, I am. Hey, so it was closely twice by different individuals, doctors asking, are you guys ever going to have any type of advisory committees? I said, you know what, we actually just spoke about at our last meeting about ad hoc meetings and things like that. But I don't know anything about advisory committees or what capacity someone would participate in that. So I said, that'll be something that'll be covered down the road.
Yep.
And then the next, the next statement was, well, myself and another doctor may want to be part of that. And my answer then was, well, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something that may come up down the road.
Right. So that's the zero conflict, you're totally fine. All those conversations are totally fine. And it's very common, actually, for you to create a quality committee or an advisory committee, and those relationships come in handy, that's an asset. That's not a negative thing. You say, I've known this doctor for 20 years, and they did my wife's heart transplant, or whatever it is. You know, they're great for this committee. You're allowed to advocate for the folks you know. The problem is if they just took you to a $500 steak dinner, and then you, and then you offered to put them on the committee or whatever.
Yeah, well, one of them offered like, hey, we should go have lunch or coffee or something. And I said, I don't know, mate.
Lunch and coffee are fine, if it's less than $50, you don't have to disclose it. If it's more than $50, you have to dispose it on your Form 700. That's a really annoying part of being a public official, is people can't just buy you a harmless lunch tip anymore without you having to disclose it. So that's why a lot of public officials say, don't even, I, I will pay, or let's just go 50/50, because I don't want to disclose it, and the people are going to accuse me of favoring you, or whatever it is. But, but yeah, those comments, conversations, and for you to say, if and when, you think about a citizens committee or whatever it is, saying, I've known this person for a long time, or this person helped my niece out with her broken elbow, whatever it is, I think they're great, nothing wrong about that. That's just you taking your personal experience and applying it as an elected official.
And how about like, discuss applications, you know, we could probably say, oh, here's an application.
Sure. Yeah, and you will decide as a board in real time, when you're forming your committees, what's important to us here. Who, you know, applications, qualifications, backgrounds. We can guide you with advice. You can ask consultants for advice, there's plenty of ways to do all of this. And, you know, I think it is going to be a very big undertaking once everything is consolidated, because you'll really need, the most critical thing will be getting a very good chief executive, who knows what they're doing, to guide all of this for you. Because you're not here to run the business, you're here to oversee the business, to make the policy decisions, the political decisions, the strategic decisions. The vision is yours, the execution is that of your staff. And that just usually means a CEO or CFO, or both, and then go. And if they're doing a good job, great, and if they're not doing a good job, then you find a new one.
Like, we've had, when I sit on, or I sit on city council, we had actual training, because we have a couple new board members. And they say there's only like five real tasks that the board does, and that's approve the budget, hire the CEO, give, vote on policy, do oversight of contracts, and the strategic planning.
Yeah, probably like handbooks, like the stuff like, your employee handbook, union contracts, big, big things. There's this like flow chart I used to show in some of these like, that's like this. It's like, how important is the decision? That's the board involvement. The least amount of money is the less board decision, the less board involvement. And it's actually very important that you as a board member don't micromanage your staff. Because when you get out of your lane and start getting into day-to-day operations, that can go outside the scope of your DNO insurance, it can go outside the scope of your responsibilities as board members. Folks can accuse you of things, and, you know, overstepping is a dangerous territory for the board that, that, you know, you belong in the big picture, you're the big-picture policymakers. And getting involved in day-to-day operations or asking to see what this nurse makes or what this doctor makes is considered, could be considered an abuse of power, because you are entitled to everything that the district is doing. Private, private stuff, contracts, I want to know how much we're paying, sure. But then the point of that should be to bring it to a public meeting for discussion on a policy issue, not to be like, I don't like the head of HR. That's something for your CEO. They hire and fire that person, not you, actually. You hire and fire your CEO, sometimes also your CFO, and that's it. They hire everyone else under them, and if you don't like something some of them is doing, you take it up with the CEO, and you give that feedback to them in a board meeting, and you say, I, none of us like this person, we're letting you know we want to see a change. And they can say, too bad, this person's critical, and then you have to figure out how valuable your CEO is to you, or they can say, message received, and get rid of that person. But really, you shouldn't be involving yourself in the day-to-day operations. And that's why it's important to have a really good staff person.
Yeah, our city manager would always, you know, we'd have council members, you know, try to go talk to staff, and, hey, I'm going to go talk to the public works department, you know. And he would be like, no, 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 the employees are mine, and I am yours.
Exactly.
They are mine, you don't go talk to them.
Exactly.
Like, realistically, none of us, other than our CEO, should have any business going and talking with any of our staff.
Because you can consider, you know, you're the bosses, the main, main, main bosses. And if you go talk to a nurse, or to a doctor, or to a patient, or to whoever, they're going to take your statements as statements of the district. It's impugned to you by virtue of your office. And so you don't want to do that without authority from the board, and you don't want to do that and talk out of line. And also, you don't realize, many folks don't realize, you're very intimidating as a public official because they think you have the power to control their job, or whatever, their surgery, or whatever it is. So that's why if like, God forbid something goes wrong, they're going to say, oh, it's because that director got involved, or is... So that's why it's best to keep it super high level. And, and make sure you have confidence in the folks that are, you know, working for you. What else did I miss? There was one other thing that was going to be important, but I can't remember it right now. A lot of this stuff shakes out in the, you know, running of your meetings and the running of your staff. But yeah.
Who's that?
That's me. It's like a nice photoshopped version of me, probably seven years ago or something, like, 10 years ago, I jerked the book in. But you're always welcome to email or call me, text me, ask me any questions, if any of this stuff comes to you later, or if you're like, I forgot what you said on this slide, if you wrote notes, feel free to contact me. And then we'll see you next Thursday, I think next Thursday, yeah, for the next regular board meeting, and I'll have policies or bylaws for you.
Thank you.
Of the U of U, you know.
All right. And then we'll have more updates on the negotiations.
Perfect. You want that all during this meeting? Do you have any comments or comments? No?
So thank you.